You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford.
I just ask again, when we allow the public to speak, you first need to communicate by using the raise your hand function, or if you're calling in, do *9. And when asked to unmute, you hit *6 to unmute yourself. I just remind everybody to address any questions or comments you had to the board and not to other individuals. And any personal attacks will not be tolerated and will be removed from the meeting. With that said, let's go to item one, to approve the Board of Selecting Meeting Minutes for March 9, 2021, which was a special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, seconded by Selectman Dunbar. Any edits, corrections, changes, comments? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed unanimously. Item two, can I get a motion to go into Executive Sessions and discuss pending tax appeals? We'll invite Attorney Paredo in with us.
So moved.
Second.
Moved, seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, here now, set up a breakout room, everyone. Just please wait and we'll be back. Can I get a motion to go back into regular session?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, seconded by Selectman Dunbar. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
If you're back in regular session. For the record, no votes were taken while in the Executive Session.
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve the proposed settlement for 181 Leets Island Road and 19 Queach Road as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, seconded by Selectman Dunbar. Any discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, statues, passing unanimously. Can I get a motion to approve the proposed settlement for 11 McLean Place?
Excuse me, Jamie, someone is not muted and I don't hear you.
Give me one second. All right, so can I get a... Can I get a motion to approve the proposed settlement for 11 McLean Place?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, seconded by Selectman Dunbar. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, opposed, abstentions, passing unanimously. Can I get a motion to approve the proposed tax settlement for R.K. and J. Motel Associates?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, seconded by Selectman Dunbar. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passing unanimously. Okay, thank you, thank you Attorney Paredo. Item three, to have a follow-up discussion with the Branford Housing Authority concerning a citizen's petition regarding the Parkside Village. As we know, we discussed this item over a couple number of meetings. We did receive a petition that was forwarded on to us from the RTM. The petition item was to speak to the chair and the maintenance, past and present, of the facility. We did invite the commission members.
Can I join this?
All right, so I just got...
I think we're gonna have to mute them.
Yep. So we did invite the commission members, who I believe we have some here today. Excuse me, I'm just muting. So with that, I see we have Tacey Low, Chairwoman, is here. Tacey, I will unmute you. Is Kate Collins here? Mark Colletto is another chairman. Jerry Mistrangelo. And is Paula Humphrey here?
No, she's not. She was told the meeting was canceled.
Okay. Well, so as I said, thank you for those who were able to attend today. You know, the board heard a lot of discussion on this matter and we thought perhaps it would be in the best interest of not only the board but the community to hear directly from the commission, to get a better understanding of the Parkside, the process in terms of maintaining the buildings, finding tenants, and understanding a little bit more about the potential project. So with that, I don't know if the Chairwoman would like to take the lead, talk a little bit about the facility. And since, I guess, just in the interest of time, I know you have another meeting, perhaps I'd be interested to hear, you know, talk a little bit about the funding structure, the rent structure, and how that translates into the maintenance or therefore leading to a deferred maintenance as stated in the past. Go ahead.
I have a prepared statement, Jamie, that I'd like to read. I'll start by thanking the select folks and I'd like to introduce, I think you know, we already did this, Jerry and Mark are the only two other commissioners here. And we do have a meeting at 7:00, so depending how long this goes, I'm gonna have to go and get started on that meeting. I wanted to say, to start by saying the significance of the award that we just received from CHAFA, the Connecticut Housing Finance Association, is huge. It's huge. It changes everything for us. We've been working towards this award for six years about. Efforts to obtain the award began in about 2015 under the Branford Housing Authority's previous Chair, Doug Dennis. Parkside 1 was built in 1970 and Parkside 2 was built in the 80s as part of state public housing portfolio. So I want to emphasize that the town of Branford puts no money into these two complexes, not for construction, maintenance, or operations. There's no line item in the town budget for Parkside 1 or 2. There's been a few small city grants, which have been run through the town budget, but those are state funds that the town simply serves as a... The award we received from CHAF on March 25th will enable the rehabilitation and expansion of Parkside 1, giving existing residents larger and more comfortable apartments, better access, including elevators, common areas, accessible apartments for those with mobility, visual, or hearing impairments. They'll have workout facilities and onsite service coordinator for the residents. We are overjoyed to have obtained this award. As I believe most people understand by now, the Housing Authority operates under state statutes. The Branford Board of Select appoints our members but provides us with no funds. An award like this from the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority is the only way we could fund the rehabilitation that our building so desperately need. Let me be clear, the Branford is in no way prohibited from supporting the maintenance improvement and operations of the Branford Housing Authority's properties. In fact, had we not received this funding, we would have, out of necessity, probably come to the town and ask for a similar amount of money. But putting that scenario aside, the only way we could obtain the awards from the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority was to partner with a developer with experience working with awards such as the one we just obtained. To that end, the Branford Housing Authority partnered with a nonprofit affordable housing organization to do a needs assessment many years ago and issue an RFP for such a developer. Branford's Housing Authority has been very fortunate in that Beacon responded to that RFP. The developer we have been working with Beacon is the best in the business. Beacon has provided us with sophisticated advice and support for obtaining this award and has continued to work with us through the many setbacks and delays that our efforts have experienced. Just to give you an indication of how complex the financing for a project like this is, the agreement that we have with Beacon is 55 pages long and the application for the funds is somewhere around 1,600 pages. So the bottom line is that receiving this award, it'll be about $20 million pumped into the town of Branford. This means jobs and substantially improved conditions for our tenants. And now to address the concerns of the citizen's petition, an examination of past and present living conditions at the Parkside Village Housing Complex and its oversight by the Branford Housing Authority. Well, I think it should be obvious that this award will bring improved living conditions to that complex where we're fortunate to have gotten it. With regard to the commission's oversight of Parkside Village, we operate through a management company. Prior to August 2020, it was Merit and thereafter it's been Beacon. Beacon is a large full-service company, has divisions that both manage facilities and a separate division that does development or redevelopment of properties. Beacon's management has been well-received by Parkside residents, though COVID has made it difficult. The staff have built relationships with the residents, kept them informed about the development process and engaged them in socially, in social events as much as possible. Beacon's management and development teams work closely together, having Beacon already onsite. As a management agent, will mean that the redevelopment will go as smoothly as possible. Beacon has also worked diligently to address a backlog of vacancies. The accumulation of those vacancies is in large part what caused us to release Merit from its property management contract. Awards like this make an enormous difference in the quality of housing and the stable operations of the Branford housing communities. The funding award will generate other private equity and debt funds for this much-needed development. Lost my place there, sorry. So it's gonna mean that we can, the property has enough operating money to keep the buildings well-maintained, safe, and financially stable for many years to come.
Thank you, Chairwoman Low. A couple questions based on your comments and following up. I believe you had stated, the complex now currently serves, if you could, the demographic being served?
Currently serves seniors and people with disabilities.
Okay. And you said that during your statement, you said this is the only way to fund the maintenance of this facility?
Well, no, this will bring us stability to be able to keep, to have a better handle on the maintenance. It's gonna be much more financially stable project when it's built. The, you know, the rent structure is a little bit different. There will be opportunity for folks with much lower income to have access to units at Parkside and there will be units that are market rate, a few units at market rate. But overall, the way that this is gonna be done, it'll be much more stable. One of the issues that happened a few years ago is that Parkside used to have a lot of funding through ERAPs, which is elderly rental assistance programs and regular rental assistance programs, and the state cut those fundings. Those programs don't really, you know, they just, there are some people who are grandfathered in, but any new tenants do not have opportunity for that. So we're getting really low rents and it's just, the funding, the way we had it, is just not sustainable. So this will give an opportunity to have a more sustainable, functional, ongoing system at Parkside.
Okay, but just to be clear, there are other, there are other funding sources that could be used to address renovations and maintenance issues other than what is being used by, or being sought, or has been sought by this project?
Jamie, I think that's a little complex because the amount of work that needs to be done on the existing Parkside 1 buildings would push us into a place where we would have to become ADA compliant. Our buildings are not handicapped accessible, even though they're for seniors and handicapped folks. They're not ADA compliant and we would have to, we would have to make them ADA compliant. And with the tiny, tiny units, it's a physical impossibility to make the existing units ADA compliant.
But there are, to be clear, there are other funding programs for housing?
Okay, well, everything we looked into, this was the option we had and I mean, I have, you and I have had many discussions. I've asked, you know, I've asked, do you have any, do you have any solutions for us? You know, we hear that some people don't think this is a good idea. We've looked, we've tried other spaces, we've tried other funding sources. You know, I'm thrilled that we were able to be successful in obtaining $20 million to put this project, you know, in motion. So if there are other funding sources, it would have been, you know, it would have been good to have known about it.
I'm asking the Housing Authority. I'm just aware of seeing some other CHAFA awards that have been awarded to other complexes that were to address various needs. If you could touch a little bit more upon the population being served, you said this will help us, this will provide housing for those on, you know, even lower income that's not there. Now, the current population that is there or was being served, is my understanding that, you know, these are many individuals with very limited income. And for many years, that you were relying on, as you stated, the ERAP and the RAP subsidy in order to have a sustainable funding stream to maintain the facility, is that accurate?
She's been muted.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I have a large dog that was gonna make some noise. I didn't want to bother everybody with it. I'm sorry, could you repeat the question, Jamie?
Well, let's talk a little bit about...
You're talking about the income levels. So 20% of the, in the new, in the new structure, 20% of the units will be very low income. There'll be supportive housing, so it's people who are, you know, in, basically, I think that the population we hope to address with that is folks that the Branford Counseling Center or BHCA have referred in the past and their income has been too high to qualify them for Parkside currently. And it's been a frustration for our other town agencies, you know, to not be able to get people into Parkside because although they were, you know, they're only on social security, the amount was too high for the state, the state levels. This will allow us to let some folks who fall below that to be able to get a voucher to move in. The project will come with some vouchers that will allow folks who are even lower income than the current residents to be housed at Parkside. And I just want to state one more time that we have legal obligation and we're thrilled to be able to rehome everyone that's currently living at Parkside 1 in the new building.
Yeah, but, all right, this is very important, I feel, to get clarification on this. Currently, right now, we have 50 units, correct? Well, 90 total, but with Parkside under the redevelopment is 50 units that are gonna be redeveloped. The income bracket for that, those, the current population, or even if you were to say what was being, was eligible to move in there when you had the subsidies, the ERAP and the RAP program, where would they fall in terms of the income levels?
She didn't take...
She did. Across the street.
I'm not sure, people are unmuted, but Jamie, you know, I don't know that I can speak to all the specifics of exactly where people are gonna go, but I do know that there's a mathematical calculation that was part of the application process that Beacon submitted to CHAFA. And some of the reasons that we did what we did were exactly because you get points for, towards the award for certain things and part of it is having both subsidized, supported housing, so the very, very low income, and to have some units that are gonna be at market rate. So having those two things, that's what CHAFA wants to see and so that's what we put in. And that's how we won the award. We had a very high score on our, on our scoring of points for the, for the award.
But, you know, and Tacey, we've talked about this in the past and I know I mentioned it, but I think it's important for the benefit of the others on the call. That's where I see there's a, where I have an issue is you have 50 units that are serving the most vulnerable population here in the town of Branford. And this is not, in addition, this project where, you know, I recognize the work you put into it and you're, you see the benefits of moving forward. But you have to, where I think we need to recognize that this is not in addition to... This is to, at the expense of what we have. So you have 50 units, you have 50 units that, my understanding, is that it's serving a very vulnerable population. And now we're gonna go to 67 units. That's gonna be a tiered structure, correct? So on that market rate, you're gonna have some at 60%, you're gonna have some at 40%, and then you're gonna have some below the 25% of the median income. So we're actually, this project is to the detriment of those at the, how is there an increase in units or those being served at the lower end of the income level?
Because there's gonna be 20% of the units will be even lower than the requirement for Parkside now because they will have vouchers. So we will be allowed, we will be able to serve even more vulnerable, low-income people than we currently do in addition to that there's more units in general and there's more bedrooms in general.
Well, but again, you stated at the beginning that the population being served is seniors and disabled, with disabilities, correct?
Correct, and they no longer allow housing discrimination based on age. It's not, they won't fund a project at all that is limited by age. It's, they consider it housing discrimination and we would not have gotten the funding if we had continued to be discriminatory by age.
Well, is it for that funding source that you got more points for being mixed by age? But there are plenty...
We wouldn't have gotten any money. It's not, it's no longer legal to discriminate by age for, to get federal, I think, money for housing. So we're just complying with the law.
Jamie, can I say something?
Yes.
Okay.
You just have to state your name.
Sure, I'm Jerry Mistrangelo. You know, I've spoken to a number of residents and I just wanna kinda share some of the perspective of many of those residents. I'd like to begin by just saying they're scared. They feel extremely uneasy with what's going on on two different levels. The first level is, are they all going to be guaranteed to stay there both currently and long-term? Seems to be one major concern. And the other concern is, even if they are, they all now realize that their current living environment is going to change somewhat dramatically with more people and a, and they realize that what was exclusively senior housing is now affordable housing and that changes the environment. And so there seems to be a lot of extremely high number of people that, residents that is, that feel extremely uneasy and insecure with what their living conditions are going to be like moving forward. Granted, the place is gonna be improved. However, the environment is questionable in terms of, you know, how they, they certainly do not feel comfortable with the uncertainty of how this mix of senior housing for those that are able to stay and affordable housing and that seems to be a very, very legitimate concern of the residents that are currently there.
Thank you.
I would like to add a couple things, Commissioner Mark Colletto.
Go ahead.
Just to back up a little bit, when the chairperson had said that she tried many other funding sources for renovations, as a commissioner, that was never communicated to me that they even explored anything for upgrading to ADA compliant possibilities or any kind of renovations. So I'm not quite sure, I think from my, from my experience in the past year and a half on the commission, their only, their only dedication was to get this project to move forward and get it funded. They were not, really not interested in doing any renovations. I don't even know if they had consulted with the town about any other funding sources that may have been available to renovate the existing units for the elderly, the people to remain where they are. And the other thing that I would like to bring up before we go any further is, it's my understanding that this whole parcel of land, Parkside 1 and 2, was actually donated to BHA for a specific use of elderly housing. How did that change? I mean, because wasn't that a condition of the land being used for, you know, a particular usage? And now we're converting it over. We're really going against the wishes of the person who actually donated it from their estate to the Housing Authority.
I'd like to address Mark's first point, that this goes back long before you were on the board, Mark. Once we, this, a lot of this exploration happened even before I was on the board. There was a recognition that these buildings were gonna need to have something seriously done and they looked at lots of options. They hired a consultant, they had a very major, like a needs assessment done that was quite startling and it made everyone recognize that a solution needed to be found. So that is when, based on that RFP, based on that needs assessment, they put out an RFP to look for somebody to do the redevelopment. I think, I mean, Jamie, you and I have talked about funding from the town. I think there's been, there's been a number of funding sources explored long before you were on the board, Mark. Once we signed the agreement with Beacon, then we have a commitment, we made a commitment during, in that agreement to do everything we can to help move this project forward to get improved housing for our residents at Parkside and expand affordable housing for the town of Branford.
Yeah, but I will just add, when this first came forward as a project, you know, I know you're stating that they had to make it, you couldn't have it limited by age. I believe, I understand that with seniors and those with disabilities, that you couldn't restrict those with disabilities in that the housing. However, when this was first presented as a project, the makeup was going to be, remain the same. And that may have been even before you were on there, Tacey, or I don't know, initially you came on, but I know that was the fact because even when they were first doing their first application prior to submitting, they wanted, there was concern with the point system was being changed, where you got more points if you did not limit it to seniors and disabilities. And there was a request at that time to, you know, not make that a part of the point system. So early on in the project, in the application project, application for the project, it was represented that this was going to maintain the same population that was being served in terms of seniors and those with disabilities.
So Jamie, I think...
If I could just finish my...
Sure, sure, sorry.
I do, I don't want to get hung up on it, but I feel it's very important because this is what I struggle with. I feel that we're now doing a complex again. You haven't convinced me that it is not to the detriment of the population being served. I know you said, well, there's gonna be those with even lower income that are currently allowed in there. But is that... But is that due to the, the freeze of the E-RAP and the RAP? And has the housing authority ever approached our, this, you know, the state delegation about reinstituting the E-RAP and the RAP program? You know, i- is that the issue when you talk about income and those who are too low, don't have an opportunity to move in there? If you can address that, and again, you know, we have 50 units, which we've heard for many years that the rent level isn't high enough to maintain the, the, the facility. Therefore, you needed to go to a tiered system, which in effect will, at the end of the project, will leave less units available to the most vulnerable. We have an aging population in this town with very limited income, fixed income, and that number's only growing. So I don't see how this project is addressing that need, that growing need. Go ahead.
Jamie, there's a couple of things that I have to say. You know, I don't have a lot of time because as you know, I have, and, and we knew this going into this, you and I knew this, that I have to go to the housing meeting after this. I, I want to say a couple of things. First of all, you know, housing laws have changed over time and, you know, we've been at this a long time trying to get this project through. And in that time, housing has become kind of a front burner issue and, and the laws have changed around it. And it's become more and more important to both on a federal and state level, that, that housing, that low-income housing be, be dealt with. And I, again, I just want to say, I think, I think it's a great project. I think we're going to really, I think that we're going to really be able to serve a lot of people that we couldn't serve before. I think we're, we're beyond talking, there's a funny thing is, we're kind of beyond talking about this because we have a contract with Beacon. We just got, you know, a grant, a, a funding source that will in the end bring $20 million to Branford. We will have new buildings to house these people who desperately need nicer places to live. I mean, I, I just think, I don't know, I don't know that why we're debating some of the things about what happened six years ago because we're in a contract and we're under obligation to do everything we can to make this project a success. And I for one, am thrilled about it. I'm so happy for the town of Branford and the residents of Branford. Angela wants to say something.
Selectwoman Higgins, I just want to make one comment real quick though, because it's important. I don't think, to be clear, we're not debating what happened six years ago. I want to be clear. My concern is what's going to happen at the completion of this project. So I'm looking actually into the future. Again, but I'll, I'll now turn it over to Selectwoman Higgins, who I believe has some questions.
I just have a very brief question. Is there a, does the housing authority itself maintain a documentary or data file for, in one location that is, that is accessible to each and every member of the housing authority at Branford?
I'm not sure what, what kind of documentation you're, you're talking about. We have, I mean, all the documents, you know, are, when we just did the application, those were all made available to all the, to all the members, the, when we, when we've had new members, we do commissioner orientation where we provide them with copies of all the documents that are, that are pertinent and we, we will make, we always make available any documents people ask. I know it, it gets said that we won't release documents and it's just not true.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not attacking you in any way, not at all, Tacy.
Thank you.
What I'm asking is, no, no, no. What I'm asking is, but is there one, one center of where all this is filed or kept that's accessible for, or as it comes along, you just send it out so that members that are new to your housing authority, they don't really have access to what was, what came prior? You know what I'm saying? To bring them up to speed?
Yeah, we do. We do have a, we have a, we have two big folders that we present to new commissioners with much of the documentation that you're asking. I think at this point, for, since we've had the Yale Law Clinic, they are the keepers of many of our documents. Beacon has a, a, a great deal of the documents. It used to be Merit. Merit used to be the ones, you know, the, our old property manager. They had their offices. All the paperwork was kept there. Beacon has now the same, you know, all the audit type stuff is all in file, all accessible to members who asked to see anything. We, you know, it's, there's nothing, there's nothing to hide. It's all, this is all legal stuff. We, we're doing everything that we're required to by the state of Connecticut and it's all, it's all above board. It's all been audited. We've come out without any, you know, there's never been any thought of a, of misappropriation of funds. We've done a great job. We've, it's all been clean and well-respected by the state.
I just would, Jerry Mistrangelo, like to say a few things. I know I'm fairly new on the board. In terms of alternative, you know, financial sources, I've never heard any discussions whatsoever about that. That's number one. Number two, you know, we mentioned the Yale Law students. That's, I'm not quite sure if they are, in other words, we haven't even voted as to whether we wanted them to be renewed. And I think we're going to certainly address that at our seven o'clock meeting. And again, I think the bottom line is, you know, what best serves the elderly and the disabled? And anything other than that, it's not to the town's best interest. So I just wanted to include that.
What is the status with Parkside 2? Wasn't the authority issuing an RFP to look at that facility in terms of some of the maintenance?
Yes. We have, we hired an engineer company. There are some, some things we're doing. We have a consultant who's been working with us who is pursuing some grant funding for that. We certainly don't want to see Parkside 2 end up in the, in the situation of Parkside 1. It's somewhat newer than Parkside 1, not a lot. It does need some work and we are pursuing funding sources that we would do, that would not, that would not put us in the problem of the ADA compliant situation again. We're not.
So there is other alternative funding sources?
Only to do kind of some of the structural things, Jamie. Like I think you know that we have a problem with concrete falling down off the, over, over the sidewalks of people and we really don't want people getting hit with falling concrete. So, you know, we have, you know, we have had an engineer. We're trying to get that work done. We're trying to, you know, the best we can do right now is to keep everyone as safe as possible. That's our priority when we do, when we look for funding, we're funding to keep, you know, the, the, we had problems with the lifts. We've solved that problem. We have problems with the concrete. These buildings are old and, you know, the, the solution we feel is, is great is to have a brand new building at Parkside 1 that's going to meet the, the modern needs of, of the residents' current and future at Parkside.
But, but, but to be clear, again, it's not going to meet, I mean, you know what? Would you forward to the board the current the population being served, what was being served under the E-RAP and RAP program?
I don't, I don't know. I mean, I have to get that. That would be Cheryl from Merit. I mean, I, that would take a lot of work, Jamie, to get that information together.
It's important, whether it's a lot of work or not, I think it's important that, that we have, and the town has full disclosure in terms of this request. So.
You want a breakdown of all the years of who had what income and what?
No, I, again, and this is where, you know, I've stated this to you before and I'll say it in this meeting. You know, I, I, I think as a town and serving on boards and commissions, we don't necessarily make decisions for individuals. We really look at, you know, what's for the greater good or for who we know how to serve. And I know it's been stated many times that, you know, the residents, the current residents who are in there will continue to be housed. But the question I have, would in the future, somebody who finds themselves in the, in a position that maybe a current resident is in, in terms of whether it's a disability or income level, or will they have the same opportunity that is currently being provided? And when you show that you're on a tiered income and based off the median income in the town of Branford and what the rents are doing, 10% being market rate, another percentage being over 60, between 60 to 80, I assume, another bracket between 40 to 60. Now you start to get down to small numbers that'll be actually serve a population that's a under 25% of the median income. I would, I would, I would, is it safe to say that Parkside is currently serving residents that are 25% below the median income in the town of Branford, which would be roughly about an annual salary of, say, $20,000 a year?
I, you know, I, I can't, I can't, I don't have numbers in front of me, Jamie. I'm sorry. I didn't have that preparation in mind. I didn't know. I thought we were talking, I didn't know we were going to be talking finances. I thought we were talking more about the conditions. So I, I can get back to you on that. I can get, I can get that information.
Tacy, I don't mean to put you, I, you know, we've talked about, I think it's all, it's, it's connected, right? We, we heard from the housing authority that, well, we're not getting enough in income or rents to maintain. We need to have a sustainable rent structure. And what I'm.
Project, the project comes with vouchers. That's one of the major, big, big, big bonuses of this is that we will have vouchers, housing vouchers again.
Right. But, but again, and again, I've been asking this question for a while now. What, if you look at the current income level being served and how many will that, you know, and there's 50 units in that facility and I understand there's some things that need to be addressed with, I'm not denying that. But once we go to a new project and a new building, how many, and I'm not talking about current residents, I'm talking about income level. How many will have the same opportunity in the new facility? Will it still be 50?
Well, again, there will be 20, you know, there's a structure. 20% will be probably lower income than currently exist. All the current residents, you know, in the future, the, the rent structure will, and those people will stay until they, until they choose to leave Parkside. So there, it's not like that there, there will no, be no effect to the current residents at Parkside ever about the rent structure. We will now be able to serve more low-income people than we currently do.
So it sounds like the mix is going to change as, as the current seniors either pass away or leave or whatever. It won't be the same, the same mix. So eventually this may end up being 80% affordable housing and 20% seniors. That's what it sounds like to me.
Seniors are not going to be in the mix. They're not, that we can't, we cannot discriminate by age. So we cannot rent in the future based on people's age. That's not, it's, it's, it's housing discrimination.
But we're not.
I have to, I'm going to have to go because I have my meeting coming up in eight minutes. I have to do some preparation for. So I apologize. Is there any, anything, Jamie, before I sign off that you want to?
I just asked the, I don't know if the other selectmen have any, any other questions?
No, I think, I mean, I think, I think she's answered the questions that were asked of her this evening. I, I do appreciate the fact that everybody was respectful during this, this meeting. I would ask though, maybe just send us the, the breakdown. I'm pretty sure that someone can give it to us. I, I don't think that's a big deal. That'll settle a bunch of the other questions that are still lingering out there. And as was said before, this project, you know, right, wrong or indifferent, and there's many views on it, is going forward because of the fact that the monies and there's contracts and so forth. And I think a lot of what we're doing right now is preparing ourselves for the future and maybe having more input and dialogue prior to commitments because I think that's what the residents want. And I think that's probably what we should be doing without interfering with the commission as, as we cannot tell them what they can and cannot do. So I think it's important if we get that information to us and, and our only true job here is to see that the right people are there to go forward. And, and I appreciate the fact that you came here and spoke this evening. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for having us, Ray and Jamie and Angela. Thank you very much. I'm going to sign off. Thank you again. Bye.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment, please, Jerry Mistrangelo?
Sure.
I, I know it was mentioned by fellow Commissioner Colallo, you know, concerning the legalities of the land that was donated. Is that a legal question? You know, what's the validity of that in terms of, this was donated for a particular cause and a particular reason, a particular group of people. It was donated on behalf of the Foot family and, you know, does, is that the fact that that's changing, is there legal exposure there if the Foot family decides to pursue the fact that these wishes are no longer being adhered to?
Jerry, I, I believe this issue was looked into before and I don't, I believe there was no deed restriction placed, placed on the deed, is my understanding. But I will confirm that. I do see we have a couple of hands up. I don't, Jerry and Mark, if you're able to stay. But I assume these are questions relating to this issue. Mr. Petrowski, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Coswell. But I got to tell you, you did a great job with the questions tonight. And I'm not going to argue with you on that. I think you did a fantastic job. And unfortunately, I don't think your questions really got answered tonight. The past and present living conditions still haven't gotten resolved. It was all we're getting, a new building. The fact that it's been in violation of the fire code for over a year. The fact that somebody got trapped in the elevator or the chairlift for a long period of time, you could find that out from the fire department. And the fact still hasn't got addressed that you simply asked a question, but I wish you was still here to answer it. There's 50 units there now. There's going to be seven units designated to the 50 people that are currently living there. So we're losing 43 units, no matter how you look at it. I don't know what people are, are lower on the pay scale than what's currently living there now. I don't know. She doesn't have the statistics. You don't have the statistics. And number two, we didn't even go into the fact of we're losing senior housing as a community. We're losing the parking for our ball field because that got voted against in the court up in Hartford. Why it's not heard in New Haven, I don't know. But Hartford judge decided that we can't use our own property anymore, that they're taking it over. None of that was even discussed, that our kids of the community are going to lose. Our seniors are going to lose. That rock and forest is going to be blasted out of there. The Green Tree people are going to be all teed off. And we still haven't improved anything except that we've made affordable housing for everyone in the state while our seniors lose once again because they're not going to have the housing. And, you know, there's so much more you could go into. She says we didn't have the money. And one thing I could say with you is you've been very generous with helping people, the community. The animal shelter, you guys helped, as a town, we helped out. The library, I think if they came to you and said, listen, we're in a jam, we need some money here to, to help us out. How much money would it really cost to widen 50 doors and 50 bathroom doors to make it ADA compliant? I mean, they had money to hire a consultant. They had money to hire this other group. They don't pay their bills. That's been on record that they owe money. You could ask Commissioner Colallo that. They owe landscapers money. They owe contractors money. They don't pay their bills, but they have money to hire these consultants. But they don't have any money to put back in for the seniors of our community. I think that's a big problem. And I think that's a problem that most of us on this call have is nobody here is against the low-income or affordable housing because it's already there. What our problem is, is look at the costs that the town is losing for this. We're losing our ball field parking. The seniors are losing their housing and they come up with these excuses. And, you know, I'm glad you asked some questions. Unfortunately, they really didn't get answered. And, you know, I don't know what to tell you, but there is a lot that, that needs to be done there that, you know, her term is up. You know, maybe it's time you get some new blood on there. But I would just like to, you know, thank you again because I think your questions were very relevant to what was going on and, and thank you. And hopefully if anyone else has any questions, feel free, but thank you, Mr. Coswell.
Thanks for coming. Mr. Pericom.
How are you? Could you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So the question I really have was, and unfortunately she's no longer on, is for Chairman Tacy. Was, she was involved in signing this agreement with Beacon. Was, she was involved in signing this agreement with Beacon, which hopefully the first, second, and, and third selectmen have read that agreement because she signed the most one-sided agreement ever. Basically, if the developer gets to develop, they make money. If not, they, all the pre-development costs the town could be, or the Branford Housing Authority could be on hook for, otherwise they could actually foreclose on the property. How is this lady still on the board signing the most outrageous contract, one-sided contract I've ever seen? That's I, I think you really need to look into that because this, this contract was just one benefit for Beacon. They were at zero risk because if the project doesn't go through, every dime that they put into this, they get back. I wish I could sign contracts like that for myself every day. It would be a great move. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for the comments. Um, okay. I don't see any other hands up. We um, I guess, you know, Tacey Low has said, uh, hold on one second. I think, I think somebody on the phone is trying to unmute. Hello, is this? Yes, go ahead. Say your name, please.
Jamie, it's, it's Bowway Allen at Parkside.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it took me a while to get unmuted. Uh, but I listened to Tacey and Tacey has tunnel vision. The seniors here don't want children running around. We don't want families. We are very, very happy in these buildings. And I, listen, I'm living in one room. And I'm still happy. They are safe. I have only one leg, and you know that. And I can get around with no problem. So there's nothing as far as handicap that is not accessible in these buildings. And she's going about this wrong. We, the residents here, have been kept in the dark. It's like they wanna tell us we can go outside and sit when we can't. What we can plant and what we can't, where we can park or where we can't. And they take up all the load, unload parking spaces on us because everybody at Beacon has to be here at once. And that's not fair to the seniors. Or even to the people who are, have disabilities. Well, the best solution to this would be put PH Care in Parkside too and put the seniors up here and let us live in peace in some senior housing. I thought I was gonna live my golden years out here. And I know it's only one room, but one room that's comfortable and happy. You know, I, I can't, I was born and raised in a mansion and I'm in, down to one room and I'm still happy. I just want you guys to know how bad the seniors feel about this. Jamie Kavanaugh had no right to speak for us. He didn't ask us. He just went along with Tacey. Not right. It, it, it's a lot of people living here that don't want this. I, sorry I interrupted, but I, I'm boiling. Uh, and I will now keep my peace and I apologize for interrupting.
Not interrupting you.
No apology needed.
Thank, thank you for the comments. Okay, um, you know, when, when I, if we get that information, I'd request it, I'll certainly forward on to the board if there's anything other information that uh, the board uh, uh feels that they would like to ask to get an opportunity to request, uh, feel free to let me know and I can communicate that to the chair.
Thank you.
Housing Authority. Um, but I do have some real concern. Again, I, I don't feel that uh, it's been addressed in terms of uh the, the number of units that will be available uh after. I, I know housing is an issue. It's not only an issue in Branford. It's a, an issue across the state and the country. But we have a, a a building here that is serving uh some people. I understand there's, there's things that we need to address, and I'm supportive of that. Uh, but I don't think we should be moving forward that ultimately at the end is to the detriment of it. There are other funding sources. I don't know why, uh, we're, you know, we should be pursuing uh, the, the, the sources that were frozen in the state. We heard the E-Rap, the Rap. Um, you know, why, why are we not uh pursuing that or as a housing authority or even to come to the town and pursue that? So I, I still look for those, those answers because I feel I haven't been, uh, they haven't been adequately addressed. Um, with that, I guess we'll move on. Hey, we have one more hand up.
I'm, I'm going to the next meeting. Goodbye.
All right, um.
Thank you. Thank you, Jamie. Just one last question. If it came to where there was an option, and, and I don't need an answer now. I- if there was an option where the town could say maybe buy out Beacon's contract and keep it the way it is, would that be something that you might think could be entertained down the road?
I think that would be premature for me to answer that uh question without knowing the details and
No, totally understood. I was just
But, but, but again, I, I think I, I do have, uh, I think I've expressed my concerns. I have expressed it to the board members. Um, I've, uh, as well as other, you know, the tenant meetings and
No, I think you did a good job. I just, I just didn't know if that was maybe in the town. I mean, if that's something you could get in the town's portfolio, maybe a year or two down the road. So I just, I didn't know if it was a closed option or there could be a discussion down the road about it if the op, if it comes up. Just throwing that out there.
Yeah, and, and again, just, I mean, I, I know it was mentioned before that the town did uh assist in some small cities grants, uh, did uh assist in, uh, I believe a steep application, uh, which allowed them to, that was prior to my administration, which they did the feasibility study. Uh, but there has been no uh request um or for any other additional funding as the All right, um, I believe there's go, uh, C Sire, Carolyn Sires, you, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me, Jamie?
Yes, we can hear you.
Representative Sires, thank you, everyone. It was a great meeting. I, we have to point out the fact that I believe tonight was very scripted. It wasn't spoken. And there were so many questions that should have been easily answered that weren't. And I will tell you why, living across the street from there, I learned that when they signed the contract, every one of the doors had a bottle of sparkling cider. Yet during the entire COVID year, it was the neighborhoods and neighbors who constantly brought COVID supplies and grocery shopping, knocked door to door, just made sure those people were, were very well taken care of. And it, obviously, they did a good job. But you have a one-sided housing authority. She, I'm sorry, when she said I have to go to my meeting and you had two other commissioners on that call. And I just got a call and, and a text because I want to get to that meeting, is that Paula, the tenant commissioner, that you heard the Commissioner Cololo said she was told that this six o'clock Board of Selectmen meeting was canceled by another commissioner. Well, they are trying to run a meeting and they won't let her unmute herself. And this has been the story behind this. She is trying to get in a meeting and they're voting and they're not allowing a commissioner in. These commissioners are not in concert with each other. This, this whole process, even though you have new commissioners, were not brought on board. Everyone's learning tonight a lot about what happened. But one important thing I, I implore all of the selectmen to understand would, would I know, um, the first selectman has brought out, and I will say it again. There are going to be two-bedroom units by the state, and this is a, an email I can send to you. One person will not be allowed to move into a two-bedroom unit. If they do, as soon as a family qualifies, they will have to move out. And they are asking the seniors to sign a piece of paper stating that they are aware that they will have to move out. How is this helping our Branford seniors? Because they do, I, I, Jimmy, I don't remember the breakdown of how many units are gonna be two-bedroom or one-bedroom. But that is not controlled by the Housing Authority. That is controlled by the state once you accept the funding. How can you say all these people are going to be rehoped? And how did they not know where they're going? I, I just, there's so much that wasn't said in between, in between the lines, but the, the stuff that was brought out was very important. The new commissioner should have been told they may have can collectively looked for another funding source. But when you don't tell everybody and work well together, you, you get to this logjam right now where, where it seems to be that our Branford seniors are not going to have the priority. And that is not true. It could have stayed senior housing if they did not accept the funding, as, as uh the first selectman has mentioned time and time again. I don't think that was picked up by the Housing Authority. I'm gonna try to get on that meeting. I don't know how um it's gonna work out because I keep getting texts that commissioners not being allowed on a meeting. That should concern all of us. But thank you. It was excellent meeting, and thank you, Jamie.
Thanks for the comments. All right, um, I think we'll move on. Other select, uh, we're moving on to our next agenda item. I know we got quite a bit, and I got another meeting too. But let's go to item four, to consider, and if appropriate, waive the requirement for advertised bidding for the sale of a two thousand eight Ford twelve-passenger bus and sell it to Legacy Theater in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, this is a, a shuttle uh that the Senior Center has, which will be replacing scheduled for replacement this year. Actually, will be replaced probably in the next uh a couple of months. We're actually replacing two vehicles, a, a twelve-passenger and an eighteen-passenger. Um, Legacy Theater approached us about uh acquiring these vehicles. I asked the uh lead mechanic to do some research to see what um these vehicles typically get in auction. Uh, looking at it, the same-year vehicle, uh, roughly the same amount of miles of a hundred thousand miles. Uh, but the eighteen-passengers he was able to find uh are going from twenty-five hundred to four thousand dollars at, at auction. Retail's twelve-five, but that's, that's just what he sees advertised. But as, when we, as a municipality, we either sell things through our auction or will, the Board of Selectmen will uh waive that practice to do a direct sale. Um, I did also uh ask about, we had a uh a twelve-passenger shuttle. It was a bit, a bit older than this one. I don't have the exact year that we did sell at auction a couple of years back or a few years back, and that went for eighteen hundred dollars. So therefore, the offer for this twelve-passenger is twenty-five hundred dollars uh to Legacy Theater, which I feel is a, a, a fair offer. Um, I did also, I recall, um, we, you know, having a conversation with uh Dagmar Ridgeway, who also serves on the Greater New Haven Transit Board, um, and which we used to lease these vehicles many years ago before we ended up buying them. And she said at auction, uh, they usually only go for uh a few thousand dollars as well. So she confirmed that uh we're in the right range as well. I do see that there's a public benefit. As many know, this is uh the Legacy Theater, which is the, down in Stony Creek, is scheduled to open this spring. Uh, one of the things is there's very limited parking. So their, their plan is to have uh people attending their events uh park at some of the commuter lots, and they would shuttle them in in order to preserve uh parking uh down within the village of Stony Creek. So I, I do see that there is a public benefit uh to this sale as well.
I'll move it.
Second.
All right, moved by Selectman Dunbar, second by Selectwoman Higgins. Any further discussion? Hearing not all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, abstentions, passing the answer. Item five, to consider an appropriate approval request from Diana McCarthy-Burkery, Sustainability and Compliance Manager, to waive the bid for the hauling of municipal solid waste and extend the contract with Cherry Hill Construction for one year at the previously bid price. Um, I mean, Diana is on the call. Uh, do you want to just give a quick overview of this contract and the tonnage price? Oh, I gotta let you on here. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I, I can act it out over here. Um, sure. Thank you to the Board of Selectmen for having me this evening. Um, and to considering our request. Uh, the request is specifically for a one-year extension for the hauling of the municipal solid waste to our Covanta facilities. Um, and uh it is also gonna be guaranteed that they're gonna hold the pricing at um the current levels that it's in right now. So we think this is advantageous for us. Um, given just sort of the current circumstance, how the economy is bouncing back and we're noticing uh increases in, you know, fuel prices. We feel like if we were to go out to bid at this time, um, we, we might not get the pricing uh at the levels that we have it. We would probably get it much higher. Um, and uh, just also, the, the, the commission is really looking at doing a a holistic study of all of the waste and recycle programs and processes in town, um, which will take, you know, several months. Um, and the end result of that is that we have a strategy uh that is more efficient and more cost-effective for the town. So we feel that it, it would be in the best interest of the town not to uh have to go out to bid again um for, you know, a long-term contract if at the end of this study, we determine um that some of the services that we require may change. Um, so this was discussed at our previous um uh Solid Waste Management Commission meeting and recommended by the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any questions? All right. Gotta get a motion to
I'll move it.
Second, moved by Selectman Dunbar, second by Selectwoman Higgins. Any further discussion? Hearing not all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, abstentions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, I want to thank you for getting back to me today. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you for sending your questions over early. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, item six, to hear a report from Brian Deva, Superintendent Wastewater Treatment Facility, concerning emergency work that was necessary at Linden Shore's pump station.
Uh, yes, good evening. Uh, Linden Shore's pump station on March twenty-second, I had a force main from the pump station wet well to the uh gate valve box, and we had to dig up the uh excavate and of the work, and we had to relocate the electrical cabinet and apparatus, redo the rails. We had to redo the bypass valve. They just completed it like two days ago, actually, with all this stuff. So I, I had it done. It's all back in work. And I ended up doing one force main, but since I was down there, the force main next to it, I just replaced that too, so I don't have to dig this up another year or two. But everything's uh, the total for the labor, material, excavate work was forty-eight thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars for the work that was done.
All right, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
So again, this is just, we're not taking action. It's just to update, this falls under emergency repair work uh that needed to be done. It does exceed the bid threshold, but since it was an emergency, uh, the uh wastewater moves forward with it. And this is paid out of their, their fund. All right, thank you, Brian, if there's next question.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you.
Taking the time.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, let's uh move on uh to consider, and if appropriate, rebate the taxes on property acquired by the town located at Sixteenth Summer Island Road in the amount of nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents and six hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-four cents. Uh, this is a piece of property uh that we closed on uh last year. Um, it was uh as stated, it's on uh Summer Island Road. Um, and these were some taxes. It was never taken off, so we need to take action and bait those taxes.
So move it.
Hey, no second.
All right, moved by Selectman Dunbar, second by Selectwoman Higgins. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item eight, green use, to consider, and if appropriate, approve a request from Marion Lovett, Lovett, for the use of the town green on Thursday, May sixth, two thousand twenty-one, at six P M to hold a prayer May 6, 2021, at 6:00 PM to hold a prayer for National Prayer Day.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, second by Selectman Dunbar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To consider, and if appropriate, approve a request from the Second Company's Governor's Foot Guard for the use of the Town Green on Saturday, May 8, 2021, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM for Powderhouse Day.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved, second. Any further discussion? I see we have Richard Granulch from the Governor's Guard. Is there a comment you'd like to make or? He's going to bite all of us down there. I think he's trying to say. Go ahead, Rich. Unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear?
Oh, we did, but now we can't.
No.
Now we go. Go ahead, go.
Got me now? Good. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'll be very brief as you have a very long meeting. Every year, the Second Company Governor's Foot Guard celebrates Powderhouse Day, which commemorates the events of April 22nd, when the Connecticut entered the American Revolution, when the foot guards under our first commandant, then patriot Benedict Arnold, demanded the keys to the Powderhouse. And the company then marched up to Massachusetts to support our fellow colony. That is, every year we've celebrated except last year because of the COVID-19. Given the limitations of using the New Haven Green, the new commandant, Major John Garcia, suggested that we instead have it here at the Branford Green this year. It's be the first time we actually perform the ceremony outside of New Haven. And I think it'd be a treat for the citizens of Branford. Now, that being said, it's a scaled back event from previous years. It will only be the members of the Second Company Governor's Foot Guard participating. We will not have the other militia units. Traditionally, we have units come up from Georgia and the other 12 colonies, the original 13 colonies, coming to the event. This year will be restricted just to our unit. I did send a letter. Did you get that, First Selectman Cosgrove? Well, if you did, now I could just go quickly over the timeframe that we're looking at. I know we asked from 8:00 to 12, 8:00 to 1:00. We're looking at forming up at the Branford Armory at 10:15, 10:45 marching down Montague Street to the Branford Green. We'd form up at 11 o'clock. We'd do the demanding of the keys ceremony. We'd do a battalion review. This will be very similar to the review that was held in 2019, if you remember. I know you attended that. But again, it'd be limited just to our unit. And there won't be as many, in fact, there won't be any awards. Though we will take notice of our fallen members during this period. And then it would be dismissed from the green. In addition, we would have people earlier there around 8:30 or so just to line up the green so that the units know where to stand. Now, I'm available for any questions if anyone has at this point. Because of, we've had recently a great increase in our numbers. But unfortunately, because we don't get the funds from the state, we don't have the red uniforms that we've had in the past to issue to all the new troops. So with the color guard will be in the traditional winter reds. The rest of us will be in a, probably the OCPs that we use now. And instead of having artillery, we would have the musket fire. We wouldn't have the church service. We would do the demanding of the keys on the green itself. So if there's any questions for me of this selectman, I'm happy to answer.
No.
Sounds good.
All right, it's been moved and seconded already, correct?
Yes.
So look forward to, Rich, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, abstentions. Thank you. See you on the eighth.
Thank you very much. We'll see you on the eighth. You all get personal invitations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To consider, and if appropriate, approve a request from Murphy's Paws Rescue for the use of our green on Saturday, July 24, 2021, from 12:30 PM to 9:30 PM, all gathering of the paws.
So moved.
Move it.
All right, moved by Selectwoman Higgins, second by Selectman Dunbar. All in favor, say aye.
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 Close, abstentions, passing the answer. To consider, and if appropriate, approve a request from the Tabor Blues Jam for the use of the Town Green to hold concerts on June 5th, July 3rd, August 7th, September 4th, 2021, from 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, second by Selectman Dunbar. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Passing the answer. Item nine, to consider, and if appropriate, approve the following resolution. Resolve that James B. Cosgrove, First Selectman of the Town of Branford B., and hereby is authorized to execute on behalf of this municipal corporation a personal service agreement with the State of Connecticut for financial assistance to purchase and install a playscape at Hammer Field, CPAP 2016-07. In addition, that James B. Cosgrove, First Selectman, is hereby authorized to enter into such agreements, contracts, and execute all documents necessary to said grant with the State of Connecticut. It is further certified that James B. Cosgrove was elected First Selectman of the Town of Branford. His term for office began November 19, 2019, and continue until November 16, 2021. As the First Selectman, James B. Cosgrove serves as the Chief Executive Officer for the Town of Branford. And on March 22, 2016, had both the authority and held office to sign on behalf of the Town of Branford a personal service agreement for financial assistance. Purchase and install a playscape at Hammer Field.
I'm spelling out to the secretaries.
2016.
Calling in. Please let the school all know, guys, we hate.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay. So.
So moved.
Moved.
I'll second it.
Second it. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, passing the answer. Item 10, reappointments, Doc Master, Lino Terrelli, for the 2021 voting season.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved by Selectman Dunbar, second by Selectwoman Higgins. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, passing the answer. Appointments, Human Services.
Where'd everybody go?
What's that?
I know where everybody went. Just us. Wow.
Human Services Board, Mary Perry, the fellow vacancy left by Ronald Washington, term to expire December 31st, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, second by Selectman Dunbar. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Veterans Grade Committee, John Fitzgerald, the fellow vacancy left by Juris Petroweck, term to expire September 30th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, second by Selectman Dunbar. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passing the answer. To consider, and if appropriate, approve the following proclamation. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterlingmore proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nations and the world. And whereas trees can reduce their erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heat and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Branford, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2021, as Arbor Day in the Town of Branford, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. I get a motion approved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, second by Selectman Dunbar. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Passing the answer. Item 13. Correspondence, I have one letter. Dear Selectman Cosgrove, as the, as the February 20, at the February 2021 RTM meeting, there was a question asked regarding snow removal of sidewalks. That question was derived from multiple constituent complaints that residents were being forced to walk on a busy road to catch a bus or go to the store because sidewalks had not been shown. With a few days after that meeting, the attached letter was deposited in the mailboxes of some Branford residents. Subsequently, it was forwarded to my attention as well as other RTM members with several questions and comments. Are you aware of this letter? Is this letter, is this a letter that was generated and sent by the town? Who put these in residents' mailboxes? It is not on Town Letterhead. It contains multiple misspellings and is not signed. Some constituents were confused and questioned the authenticity of the letter. Other commented that it was unprofessional. Would you kindly respond so that we can respond to our constituents? Thank you. Tom Rocket, RTM Minority Leader. So there, per our local ordinance, it is the property owner that the bus sidewalks, it is their responsibility to remove snow. We do, when we, the town, whether it's the Public Works or our office, receives complaints of snow not being removed. We do contact the property owners in various ways. And often, Public Works will deliver a letter. I do have a copy of the letter where I recognize it was not on, placed on Letterhead, but it is from Gary Zalinski, Highway Supervisor for Department of Public Works. There's not a signature, but it is, has the name and who placed the letter there. Once again, the letter is just reminding residents of the local ordinance and their responsibility. Okay. Any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
All right, good night. Thanks.
Thanks. Good night.